I don't know. They currently have the same exact permit at the store. The permit they're showing shows that it's expired. Liquor Control says they're current.
Okay.
This is a new permit for the exacts, to replace the exact same permit they have.
But if it makes you feel any better, Madam Mayor, we don't actually pass anything. We just decide not to ask for a hearing.
Last question. Okay. What does the wish of council?
I'm going to request a hearing on August 22nd.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, signed by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes? There's no one here.
That would be a yes.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And if you'll read item 11 into the record, please.
Ordinance number 17-16, an ordinance approving an amendment to Chapter 1168.07, replacement of removed trees of Chapter 1168 Tree Preservation Regulations of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Thank you. Mr. Homan?
Yeah, I'm going to have Ted Miller help me with this one. Dave had a family situation he had to attend to, so he had to leave. This is really a continuation of a discussion on an amendment to the city's tree preservation ordinance, and it really was brought about to provide some clarity with respect to the issue of trees and replanting the trees. And I know there was discussion at the last meeting about taking this to another reading for the purposes of more public comment. I know Jim Hills from the BIA is here tonight, and if you'd like, you know, you can hear from him, and there might be others. I know the Shade Tree Commission bade in as well with some concerns, but if you want any additional background, I think Ted Miller can hopefully pinch hit here for Dave Eflin.
Yeah. It was basically to update the existing ordinance. We didn't change anything, just clarified, some language to clarify how the tree bank fund money could be spent. And just, so, in the past, we'd run into some, you know, it needed some clarification on that ordinance so that we could use that money for the street trees, and so we've just added some language to clarify that. Paul from the Shade Tree Commission is here also, too.
Okay. Jim, if you'd like to come forward at this time, unless you have any questions for Ted from council. Okay. You know the drill. Name and address.
Jim Hills, 495 Executive Campus Drive, Westerville, Ohio 43082. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to offer a few comments on the tree replacement ordinance, and understanding that the purpose of the changes that are being proposed, we do have some concerns with that and with some of the changes that are on the table. Following up on the comments from the last meeting, and I apologize for not being here, but I understand that they were read from an email that I had sent previously, about the cost and any type of, and issues with the variance process. There have been some follow-up conversations and discussions amongst legal counsel about the variance issue and questions about whether or not the typical variance process that's in the zoning code could be used for this specific purpose, and I think that we're going in the right direction, but I do think we need a little further clarification on that as well, and would like to continue discussions on that. That being the case, I guess we do have a question in terms of what is the city's policy with regard to using that variance process for this particular purpose? In other words, we would ask for some clarification of the city's policy on developing wooded properties, and I'm not sure how many times this has come up within the last 10 years or so, but I will provide an example in a minute. The purpose of asking that is to provide some level of predictability for both the property owner and a potential developer, so both fronts can be used, and so that they don't get into the process of going down the road to try and figure out whether or not they can develop it, but know upfront with some predictability as to whether or not it is a viable option for that particular piece of property. And I'll give you an example. And we looked at some other communities, and Hilliard has a provision in their code that allows for a 50% reduction for tree replacement if the site has more than 30 caliper inches per acre, and that would be the entire site, not just where the trees are located, but that applies to the entire site. So I'll follow up with regards to the fee, and I guess the best way that, in codifying the $100 per caliper inch, we do have some concerns about that in terms of the level of an expense. And I'm going to give you an example using a property that was owned and developed already, cleared back in 2006, but applying what the policy was then to what it is now. And what it was then was, basically, you replaced a tree for a tree. It didn't apply to caliper inches, and then the fee per tree for, if you were, fee in lieu of was $250 per tree. It wasn't a per caliper inch $100, so it was just a flat fee of $250. I have to, the developer asked me to say this and told, didn't ask me, told me to say this. They have no problem with where they are in terms of their tree replacement with this specific. They just allowed us to use this as an example, but they planted 623 trees and paid $250 per tree for 509 trees. This goes back to 2006. Their total cost for tree replacement and fee was about $283,000. If you take the tree study they have, let me get back through, 1,132 trees on the property. If you take the tree study, it equates to about 27,700 and some caliper inches. It's a 22-page, we can't get an exact fee because it would take me about 10 hours to go through and add every page up, but we can do that at a later point in time. So just kind of guestimating, you know, around 27,000 caliper inches. If you equate that to the fee at $100 per inch, that would be about $2.7 million, which is a very significant expense in terms of the tree replacement based on the policy that you have today. And I'm not an attorney, but one of our attorneys has said there might be a legal issue there in terms of that significant of a cost applying for that policy in terms of what the land may actually be worth. So obviously, there's some concern there. In other communities, we know that the variance process is used and used extensively. It's just a matter of whether or not, how you want to handle making land, making tree, extensively treed property, developable, and how that, you know, impacts the property owner and some potential developer along the way. So that's the extent of my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir.
I'll pinch it for Mr. Eflin, who's not here, but I will confirm for Mr. Hills that the variance procedure is available for this section. Variance covers the whole zoning code, and this is under the zoning code. And I don't handle the zonings a lot, but Dave was kind enough to email me that the variance chapter was updated to include the practical difficulty case law standard, and I think that would cover the, I've got a lot and it's got a, it's a million dollars in trees, but the lot itself isn't worth that. So I think that variance process, A would apply and B would cover that potential situation. The only other thing, Dave, I would point out from what Dave sent me, is that in addition to that variance procedure, some of these developments go through that PUD process, and that also can deviate from the caliper inch thing as well. So those are the two areas that I think were, from the email, that I thought would be helpful to point out at this time.
Okay. Did you have something to add?
Just, but, just to clarify, the $100 per caliper inch still applies if you decide to go through the PUD process as the basis for starting, correct?
I think that's the way it is now, whether or not it's in the code, but it does deviate from that with, and the way Dave described it to me was when you save some trees, he credits you for trees, and they work on together through a more of a discussion process opposed to counting trees and adding bill, or adding a bill up on the list. So I think that's the way it starts at the baseline, and then they negotiate things through that PUD, with a lot of some other elements as well. But again, I'm stepping a little out of my depth, but I'm just going from what he told me.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. In thinking about this and hearing what you have to say, I understand where you're coming from, from a developer perspective, but from a person speaking from the city perspective, when I'm thinking about an extensively treed piece of property, I'm not real excited about the idea of a developer coming in and taking all the trees down and making large variances to make that more economically feasible. So I guess from where I'm sitting, our tree policy exists to try to preserve as much of these heavily treed areas as we can, and I'd like to keep it that way, so that we do have some remaining parts of our city that, if they are extensively treed, fabulous. There's, I'm just not looking forward to the day when we're mowing all that down to develop every piece of land that we have. So I certainly understand why you want us to create a variance for that, but I think that the process that we have sets it up so that you have to go through certain steps before that can happen.
Just to clarify, I'm not asking for a variance process to be set up. I think we're asking for clarification as to whether or not the current zoning variance process is applicable for this purpose.
Okay.
And it is there. You can put it on the, mark this part on the agenda, or like Schaefer corner Darren Shulman says, variance process does apply, so you can always come back and throw it in my face if we change it.
So then you would have to go through that process if this was an issue for your particular?
At that point in time, it would be determined and decided whether or not the variance was going to be granted, and it's just, you know, knowing upfront with more predictability whether or not the policy is or isn't to allow that type of property to be developed is one of the most, one of, something that's kind of vital, knowing whether or not as a property owner or as a potential developer, whether or not it's even worth pursuing.
And I should throw in there, I did talk to Catherine Cunningham, and I think you, is she your attorney or she works with you, or, anyway, I think to clarify the point, one thing she mentioned to me is when some, it's not the property that's being developed because the variance process is okay for that, but it's when someone's considering buying a piece of property, but they don't know whether the variance will be granted. So some projects don't get off the ground in the first place because I'm not even going to mess with it if I don't know I can get the variance. If I own the property, I can go through the variance process and do it, but it's the deals that don't ever happen because the person doesn't know if they're going to get the variance that she was concerned about. Is that, is that a kind of fair encapsulation?
Very well said. Thank you.
If it becomes a sure thing, then it's not a variance, then it becomes just we're allowing it.
No, no, I just think, not that it's a sure thing, it's that they don't know whether they're going to buy the property because they don't have like a scorecard or something that says, okay, I'll probably get the variance. That's, and that could be okay, but she was just explaining that was one of her.
No, but do you understand what I'm saying, that if it's not, if it's no longer a variance, then it would be, it would be what we allow them. We'd have to allow that for everyone. If there wasn't a special variance procedure, then it would just become the way that we do things and what we allow for everyone.
But that's not, first of all, that's not what we're asking, and secondly, I don't think that's what's been proposed. It is, the variance process would have to be used based on the way this ordinance is written currently, and even with the proposed amendment. What it doesn't say anywhere in the ordinance specifically, it doesn't, it doesn't refer anywhere in the ordinance to the variance process. That's where, why we were asking the question about the variance process.
I guess my question would be, I mean, I think we're all agree about the importance of tree preservation, but I also think we want our laws regarding that to be clear and to be fair to people who act with laws laws. Could we just ask staff to take a look at how other cities delineate this, and then make sure that, I think what you're asking is to be clear about what that variance process is and how it's going to work, rather than just saying we have one, pretty much, I mean, I think we just need more, we're looking for clarification here. Could we look at how other cities define that and what their approach is, and we table this long enough to make sure that we can try and deal with some of these concerns. I don't think we should do away with what we're doing, but I think if we're going to have a variance process, we need to know exactly what it is and how it works, and let's see what other cities are doing and see if we can come up with something that works.
And if I may interject one more time, Ted, you might be the perfect person to answer this question. Is there a time sensitivity on the, because I think, as you mentioned, this, the thrust of this has nothing to do with the $100. The thrust of this is where you can spend the money and what you could buy. Is there a time-sensitive nature to that other stuff?
No.
So we could take some time to look at it without jeopardizing what you're trying to do.
Right. Yeah, and we can do that. And I think really that the variance process that Dave Eflin is referring to and that Darren is referring to is just the variance process in general for anything in our zoning code. So you go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, you have the separate hearing, and the question, I think, is, is there an alternative way of resolving those issues? And we can certainly follow up and get back to you on it.
Can you get a variance on a property that you don't already own? Like if he had, if the builder was looking to do this but wanted to know if they could get a variance, and they don't own the property? And it would, it would teeter on whether they can get, I thought you had to own the property in order to get the variance. I could be wrong.
I don't want to speak without being intelligently on that, so that's something I should definitely look up.
Yeah, but I'm okay with doing that. I think what typically happens is, you know, that process in some cases is handled by the property owner, and until that, if that variance isn't granted, then the developer's not going to buy it.
Maybe you have an option or something.
That's the level of certainty in some.
Do you understand the contract? Right, okay. I just remember having a case, and somebody wanted to buy a property, but they couldn't get the variance because they didn't own it yet, and I didn't know if this was, that was just an individual house that wanted to turn into a business.
Yeah, I imagine the applicant would be the one who wants to own it, but you're right, if the applicant, if the seller did it first and then they could work together, I.
Just want to throw that up there, okay. And if we're going to change any part of this, shouldn't it go back to the Shade Tree Commission and be reviewed by them for any kind of recommendation?
Yeah. And just, I want to recap, I hate to drag on the meeting, but when Ms. Cunningham and I talked, there's kind of two questions here. There's this money, what we can spend the tree fund on, what the thrust of this was, and that's pretty non-controversial, and it's pretty easy, then there is a bigger question as to how we want to protect, potentially, it's a whole separate issue, but it's in the same code section, how we want to change or look at or codify our tree variance thing. And so it's a bigger question. That's why I want to make sure we weren't going to go down that rabbit hole. Ted had a time constraints, but it sounds like you're okay.
No, no time constraints.
I think it's worth taking the time to do the best job we can to be clear about what our process is as it relates to trees.
For what it's worth, we have looked at some other communities. We've started that process, and it's not always easy to look at an ordinance and try to figure out every little component and how it actually works, so it's going to take a little bit of time. At least we started down that road and have to continue to offer that information or offer that information. And would love and appreciate the opportunity to work together on this.
That'd be wonderful. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward?
Yep. Hello, I'm Paul Olin, 219 North Sandusky Street, number 5 Delaware, Ohio, and I'm here as the chairman of the Shade Tree Commission, and I just wanted to point out that from what I'm hearing so far, there's a couple of concerns from the development community, and I would like to point out that one reason that Delaware is so attractive to the development community is because it's a nice place for a lot of people, that a lot of people want to live in, and that's because we've done a fairly decent job of protecting our trees as Tree City USA. We, you know, have to abide by the rules and procedures, and I would like to cite ordinance 116804 for existing trees. I heard, now I'm not sure if this was your intention or not, you mentioned something about replacing tree for tree, and I got the impression that, from the previous meeting, that developers might want to come in, and if they had a bunch of 10-inch trees that needed to be replaced, they would replace the same number of trees, but only replace them with, say, 3-inch trees, something of that nature, tree-for-tree replacement, and I believe this gentleman mentioned that. But if we were to take that approach, that's not a very logical approach because it doesn't take into account other aspects of the environmental services that large trees provide over time. And as we remember from last year's annual report from the Shade Tree Commission, that's, I think it was $775,000 per year in just city environmental services for City of Delaware Shade Trees that the city owns. So that's not on the books when it comes to these kinds of costs that are generated when, long-term costs that are generated when you remove trees. So, and another reason this is, that would not be, make a whole lot of sense is, for instance, on that property that's being denuded along 223, just south of town, just north of 315, if we were to do a tree-for-tree replacement, as I think what I'm hearing from the building.
No, he was making reference to 2006 and what happened then.
Oh, okay.
We're not going back there.
Oh, okay.
No, we need to go down that road, no.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine.
That's not what he's asking for at all.
Oh, okay.
He was just making comparison, what it cost then and what it would cost today.
Oh, I see.
Correct? Okay.
Okay. So, well, then, what I'll do then to make this simple is just when we talk about a variance, a possible variance, that we will have some pretty serious analysis, and we will be looking, the Shade Tree Commission will be looking at this very closely, and we will be looking at a lot of costs that developers do not put on the books at the time of that, that the development takes place, because a lot of development creates long-term costs to communities that are not on the books at the time that the development takes place. So I'll wait till we are more ready to talk specifics about the analysis for a specific case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramon. Madam Mayor?
Yes. I would also suggest that if any meeting is conducted between city staff and the BIA, that a representative from the Shade Tree Commission is included in every discussion that happens.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to item 12, consideration of resolution 17-26.
Resolution number 17-26, a resolution establishing a solid waste bulk item collection pilot program.
Mr. Freida?
Sure, I'll be brief. Mr. Schaefer did a great job in committee reports introducing the item. So we'd like to get this program up and running by May 9th and be able to start piloting, collecting the large bulk items in town in a program that we think a lot of residents have requested and asked for. The information, the outline is the same, it's in that packet. We're still tweaking some minor details regarding picking up appliances with refrigerant in it, some additional steps we'll have to do with that. But I can answer any questions. I'll also mention, too, and Mr. Schaefer did reference this, that will be additional code changes introduced next council meeting for the first reading, and then a full presentation and public hearing on that in the second meeting, largely regarding multifamily developments being serviced currently by dumpsters and some changes with that. But I can answer any questions regarding the bulk item collection tonight, if you have any.
Any questions? Have you gotten any requests yet from Mrs. McCloskey?
Several.
Have you?
Several.
What is the wish of council?
With adoption of resolution 1726, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of resolution 17-26. Oh, 13-26, I'm sorry, 27.
Resolution number 17-27, a resolution adopting a code of conduct for appointed officials.
Mr. Shulman?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I was asked to come up with a draft code of conduct for appointed officials. That would include boards, commissions, and committees. I had never seen one before, but we did some research with the help of Clerk McCloskey, and we found some samples, tweaked them up, and what you have here is our first stab at a process. I should point out that I received some well-thought-out comments from Tom Ober, who I think was here, is he still, oh, he's back there. I will speak for him, but I certainly would invite him to share those comments with council, otherwise I can forward them along. But again, this is a first stab, I hadn't, it's based on some other things, but I'm certainly open to any comments, council hasn't. I think we should, like with other things, I don't think this is one of those pressing deals, so I certainly think we should take it to another reading and have time to have people give me comments.
Quick question, Mr. Shulman, if this is adopted, will these sign documents by each appointed official? I didn't see any references to that.
They would, we would, if we did, if we did the ethics policy, you could sign it, you received it, but it would apply to them whether or not they signed it. It's similar to our employee handbook where.
He's right. I mean, I would assume no acknowledges that they ever saw it, it's a waste of everybody's time.
Yeah, no, it would be an acknowledgement more than a, I sign and agree kind of contract type thing. The other way we've done that in some circumstances, Councilman Jones is on read receipt emails where we send it, and it sends a message back that you opened it.
Okay. Any other questions about the process?
I just have a couple. So we want to make sure, this is a really tough thing to write a policy for, and it's a shame that we even need one at all, but my concern is that we want to be very careful not to create a policy that will result in, we're all going to disagree about certain policy issues, and my fear is, number seven, avoid personal comments that could offend other members or members of the public. That's so very vague, and there are times that I have been offended by comments that I've read, offended isn't the right word, that I've disagreed or that I've taken issue with, but I certainly don't want that to be a reason to remove someone from a board or commission because we want this variety of thought. So number seven concerns me. We can be offended and still, it doesn't necessarily mean that their conduct requires referral to a committee. The other thing is, if the conduct is deemed to be given over to this committee for possible discipline, perhaps the person should be removed from the board during the interim because this could be a long process. And so if it was serious enough that the person would need to be referred to this committee, perhaps they should be suspended from their duties while it was being examined. But we want to make sure that the policy that's written is making sure that free debate is allowed, but that certain things that really cross the line aren't, and that's a really hard thing to write a policy for. So I'm almost worried that we are going to do more harm than good by having a policy to begin with, that in all of the years of having all these boards and commissions we've only, that I know of had an issue with, and we dealt with it.
Yeah, I mean, that could be, I mean, to your standpoint, it's, it has to be of an egregious nature, and of course, that is a very subjective, you know, measurement that you're making there. So it's kind of like, you know, so many things, you know when you see it, but it's hard to define what it is.
I mean, what if someone has a blog that says, I'm critical of the city's decision in this? Would that be considered offensive? What if they said, I disagree with Councilwoman Keller's statement about fill-in-the-blank? I mean, do you see what my concern is, that at what level are we going to get involved?
I think it has to be a personal attack. I think that's, I mean, because if talking about, if you're talking about issues or things that come in front of the city, we can all disagree all day long, and that's good, because if we all fall alike, we don't need one of us, right? So, but when it comes to a personal attack, and I think that's really, I mean, that's really where it has to be of an egregious nature and a personal attack, and then that is really, I think, what we're trying to put our hands around. And, you know, disagreeing or saying, I don't, I think, you know, George is smoking dope, he was way off base on this issue, that doesn't have anything to do with anything.
George!
That has nothing to do with anything, but, you know, to turn that into some type of real directed personal attack against anyone in the. anyone individual that is either an elected official or a member of staff or another board commission-type member, then that's, that's that line that I think we need to put that, you know, draw that line to the sand at.
So should that comment word be a tax, first of all, a tax that could offend?
I think we should just strike number seven, because the one above it pretty clearly lays out the kind of stuff that we're talking about, polluter and, you see, slanders and those are the kind of things. I, I think you say we don't need the policy only because we have to comply, is, is not the right way to go. I think we should have a policy so everyone knows what we expect, and we've got a provision in here where if we can't just violate its policy, not, we can refer it to an independent group or make that decision for us. I just think number seven's so vague there, that would never stand up under any circumstances, you know, from a legal standpoint.
So Kent, tell me, is this, so is it only if we can't decide how to handle it, or would it be, I thought it was always going to be referred to this--
The way it's written right now, before someone can be removed, it has to go, uh, with that said, if someone, if the mayor just wants to reprimand them and say, "Look, you really need to stop being a jerk," uh, they don't need to go to that board for that. But to lose your position, it would have to go to this independent, um, body. Now, it's built in that, and, uh, the council could say, "Well, thank you for your advice, even though you recommended kicking them off, we're not going to do it." Or they could say, "Thank you for your advice not to kick them off, but we're going to go ahead and do it." Uh, but it does add a impartial view, and it probably is a little harder to make that move if there's a recommendation saying not to do it. So I think it helps the person, if the committee doesn't think they did something wrong.
I think at the very least, it sets some understanding of what we expect and provides a fairly, I think, fairly fair process to deal with that if there's a violation, other than I don't think number seven is--
I, I have no problem taking out number seven. Uh, this was, I think, one of the, I got that one from my council, um, decorum document, and it, it probably makes more sense from a, "Hey, council, let's try to do this," as opposed to a "we're going to enforce this on a commission member." So I think it's a good deletion to take that one out. There was a lot more stuff that I already took out that was getting more, uh, oh.
So can anybody see a reason to leave number seven in? Okay.
Would it be worthwhile to run this by some current members of some of these committees and just get their input?
Yeah.
If you send it to the chairs of each one and just get input?
Yeah, we'd do that.
Yeah, I, I would like that, because I'm, again, I just, what I don't want is the pendulum to swing too far in the other direction, and so that someday, maybe not us, but maybe at some point, the character of council changes and they're going to say to these boards and commission members, "Well, you disagree with us." So, you know, it's going, I just don't stifle the debate that makes us so great, because we've had just one minor issue that we were able to take care of and, and so. And that's just my concern with doing something like this.
And I like the fact that we've had so many people apply for different positions that we've had to interview and decide and make tough decisions as to who's going to, we just, we've had an abundance of citizens come forward, and I want that to continue. And I don't want this to say, "Well, maybe I shouldn't now that this is out there," but I don't know.
I mean, it sounded like a good idea in theory, till I'm reading it on paper, and then there's just, there's parts of me that are just afraid that--
Well, let's send it out to chairs and get input and then go from there.
I think that's a good suggestion. There's no, uh, time pressure on this one, so we can take time to get some comments and--
Okay. Elaine, if you will read item 14 through 19, because they're all first reading.
Yeah, David asked you to consider Curtis Farms, but the fact that he's away, I don't, I, I would just read them all, and if there's any questions, we can go.
Ordinance number 17-22, in ordinance for Property Investments, Inc., for approval of a conditional use permit allowing an outdoor seating area for Yummy Kettle Corn at 339 South Sandusky Street on 0.52 acres, Zone B3, Community Business District. Ordinance number 17-23, in ordinance for Shorty's Casual Cuisine, for approval of conditional use permit to construct a permanent outdoor patio at 554 West Central Avenue on approximately 1.1 acres, Zone B3, Community Business District. Ordinance number 17-24, ordinance for Tim Collettruglio, for approval of a rezoning amendment from B3, Community Business District, in R4, Medium Density Residential District, B3 and R4 PMU, Planned Mixed Use Overlay District, for River Street Business Park on 13 properties encompassing approximately 2.594 acres located at 45 River Street. Ordinance number 17-25, in ordinance for Tim Collettruglio, for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, Planned Mixed Use Overlay District, for River Street Business Park on 13 properties encompassing approximately 2.594 acres located at 45 River Street. Ordinance number 17-26, in ordinance for Tim Collettruglio, for approval of a preliminary development plan for River Street Business Park on 13 properties encompassing approximately 2.594 acres located at 45 River Street. Ordinance number 17-27, in ordinance for Miranda Homes, approving a final subdivision plat for Curtis Farms Phase 4, consisting of 32 single-family lots on approximately 7.411 acres, Zone R4, Medium Density Residential District, and located on Delaware Drive.
Okay, item 19, um, we do have somebody here tonight for that this is a final, or this is, um, I don't know, Chad, if you can pull anything up on this?
Yeah, this is, um, the final plat for Curtis Farms, and I believe there's a representative here--
Since you said it all night long, I just feel so bad!
Maybe you could just introduce yourself.
Yes, my name's Chad Buckley with Civil and Environmental Consultants, that's 250 West Wilson Bridge Road, Suite 250, Worthington, Ohio. Um, looks like we're representative for this site. It's 32 lots, it's the fourth phase of Curtis Farms subdivision. Adjacent to the east is the third phase that's finishing construction now, and homes are going in. Um, it's 32 lots, it'll include a preserve, um, at the northeast corner, I believe about .7 acres, with amenities, um, that will be, um, placed there and controlled by HOA, including a bike path to the school, and I'll answer any questions.
You did a fine job!
Who needs dating?
Don't say that!
Just kidding, just kidding.
Does anybody have questions for this gentleman? Okay.
It's right by Schultz School. Schultz is the--
Yeah.
Any bike paths?
Yeah, it's technically a bike path connecting to the school, yes, but--
So really, I, I don't know what, it's a final plat, it was fairly, it was recommended by the planning commission--
Approved by commission last, yeah.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance number 17-27.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. I move for the approval of ordinance number 17-27.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mrs. Delaware had a badge of honor for sitting at a meeting. You would deserve one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item 20 is, do you two have, did you two have anything on the agenda? And I feel bad that we ran through those.
No.
Okay.
Just want to see a way--
Okay, um, item 20 is--
Yeah, real, real quickly, uh, really the most important thing is, uh, I'll be out of, um, out of the, out of town, of the country, with the mayor and a delegation of four other people visiting Sakata, Japan, beginning this Thursday, continuing through the 23rd, which is Sunday. And, uh, I think we sent out earlier an itinerary to everybody, take a look at that. Um, they've got us going every, uh, every minute of the day, including, um, visits to two businesses over there, Japanese businesses, so we hope to, uh, bring greetings to them. And Sean has put together a, a packet of information that we'll provide about, uh, economic development opportunities here, but I think it's gonna be a great, we're looking forward to the, uh, to the visit. Uh, hats off to Dean and, uh, his team that helped put together the Moody's rating presentation on Friday, uh, to Mayor Riggle, Councilman Jones, who were part of that, uh, process. We really appreciate it. Um, and as you know, it was a, uh, we spent a, a, a good deal of time putting that together, but I think it, it went very, very well. We'll know in the next week and a half, uh, whether the rating stays the same with the AA2 or gets upgraded to the AA1. So, uh, as I said, regardless, we put our best foot, uh, best foot forward for that. So, uh, we also have, um, we've completed an update to our impact fee report, which I have staff taking a look at, that we'll, uh, get back, we'll get to council probably sometime at the end of this month of May, or May, and a sewer collection master plan. Sounds exciting, it is. It's all about our growth and how we manage it, and we'll be presenting that to council in, uh, in May as well. That's all.
Okay, come for comments?
Just, just, uh, off the cusp of work, I was, it says part of that meeting with Moody's on Friday, and I was just real impressed with the work that Tom and Dean and Sean did for that. We could not, we put our best foot forward, only thing we didn't do is give these guys a puppy, you know, I mean, uh, we, we showed the best of Delaware, and I, I have good vibe, so, you know, fingers crossed that we get a upgrade. Give them more kudos, probably. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Keller?
I just wanted to apologize, I will not be able to attend the April 24th meeting, I have to travel for business, and I am unable to arrange my flight back, so I won't get back until the meeting is over.
Look, if we can make it back from Japan on time--
My meetings will be on--
Yeah, if the meeting is still going on, I will for sure come right from the airport here, I promise.
Okay.
It might still be going on, you never know.
Mr. Rohr?
Nothing.
What's going on here?
Just want to wish you guys safe travels to Japan.
Thank you.
Here's what you're doing, we'll be back.
Thank you. Tom and I did visit JASCO, which is Japan-American--
Society of Central Ohio.
--society of Central Ohio. It was very interesting, it happened to be their 20th anniversary. Um, and I was surprised to hear how many, um, Japanese families we have living around here, how much the, our economy depends on those. Um, Double L alone had 2,200 families in it. I would have thought there would be a lot more in theirs, Phil, but, um, it was well-represented, it was a very good time, a lot of nice people. So they were excited to hear about our trip, and, um, it was really enjoyable, and we're part of that group that we've joined, we pay dues to them, so it was very, very interesting. So I'm very excited about the trip, I'm very worried about the food, but I will survive. And so with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn at 9:31.
Move, move.
We are adjourned.
Keep working on the food.
I know. I'd be worried about the food. Yeah.
All right. I think--